...at 9:01 a.m. and I'd like to start by acknowledging that we are gathered on Treaty Six lands, a part of the traditional territories of the many First Nations, Métis, and Inuit in Alberta. The town of Drayton Valley is grateful for the knowledge keepers and elders and the stories and teachings that they share of these lands and its people. I will now ask everybody to stand for the singing of our national anthem. Are there any additions to the agenda this morning?
Administration has no additions, thanks.
Any from council? Is there a member of council that would like to adopt the agenda for July 12, 2023, as presented? Councilor Kamana, thank you very much. All in favor? That is carried. Any corrections or amendments to the June 28, 2023 regular meeting of council minutes? Is there a member of council that would like to adopt the June 28, 2023 regular meeting of council minutes? Councilor Evans, thank you very much. All in favor? That is carried. We have no proclamations this morning. We do have a public hearing this morning, and I'll start by declaring that the public hearing be opened at 9:03 a.m. And those present today are myself, council, members of the audience, and administration. It is for a bylaw, 2023-3-D, for the text amending bylaw for the special reserve district. Good morning, Peter. I will hand it over to you.
Good morning, Madam Mayor and members of council. This is a text amendment to bylaw, for bylaw, 2023-3-D. It's in regards to our special urban reserve district. And the purpose of the amendment is to accommodate a recent purchase that the town made with respect to lands in the northeast quarter of Section 5 Township 49, Range 7, west of the 5th Meridian. The current land use designation on those lands is the S U R B, which is the Special Urban Reserve District. And it currently allows for permitted and discretionary uses, single detached dwellings. As part of the transaction that we had with the owners of the land, they wish to provide a condition on that, saying that there should not be any residential or permitted on the lands. And that is a requirement in order for their operational and future investment needs to industry located in and around that area. And therefore, the amendment is proposing that residential dwellings and accessory buildings and structures be prohibited in the northeast, just in the northeast quarter of Section 5 Township 49, Range 7, west of the 5th. And the amendment also includes a category called fundamental use criteria, which basically outlines that those residential uses would not be permitted in that quarter section. And it's fundamental to that district. So the recommendation, sorry, as part of this bylaw was advertised as required under the Act. To date, we have not received any comments or inquiries about it. The recommendation for council is that council gives second reading to the bylaws presented. And secondly, that council give third reading to the bylaw. Those conclude my remarks. Madam Mayor?
Thank you very much for that, Mr. Vanna. I will now call for comments from anyone from the floor. I will call for comments for anyone online. No comments online, Nathan? I will now declare the public hearing closed at 9:06 a.m. Thank you very much for that. And we'll be discussing this a little bit further in our decision item. Or did you want to move right into our 9.1 decision item right now? Yep, okay. So we'll move into the 9.1, second and third readings to text amendment to land use bylaw 2020-12-D for special urban reserve district. Go ahead, Mr. Vanna.
Madam Mayor, not to repeat myself with the public hearing, administration's recommending that second reading be given to the bylaw. And that third reading also be given to the bylaw.
Perfect. Thank you very much for that. Are there any questions for administration, or Councilor McGee?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Peter, the particular piece that we're looking at is being boxed in, right? So one of the things that comes to my mind is that there is a lot of land down in that area that, would it make any sense to just do a wide paintbrush and say, "No residential down there"? Or is that, that's not what we're looking for today, but does it make any sense?
Madam Mayor, through to Councilor McGee, that the comments do make sense. What I would say, though, is that it could be quite some time before, if there is an area structure plan for those lands, it identifies the lands as future commercial and industrial in that area. The difficulty is, is that right now, it's in that holding zone. And it may be in that holding zone for quite some time, because it would take quite some time to get servicing to that area and for that area to develop. And so it makes probably more sense to sort of wait, do this amendment, and then when those lands develop, then really, this amendment wouldn't really be-
Right. So the text amendment ready is set to, so that we can complete the-
The transaction, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for administration? Is there a member of council that would like to make a motion for a second reading? Councilor Evans?
I'll make the motion that council give second reading to bylaw 2023-03-D as presented.
Thank you very much for that. Any comment, question, or debate on the motion? Just want to get clarity here that I'm on the right one. Mr. Vanna, just because the 9.1 says for 2020-12-D, that must just be wrong, because here it says 2023?
Yes, Madam Mayor, sorry. The text amendment is a text amendment bylaw, 2023-3-D.
Okay, so just on 9.1, it's supposed to read the 2023 there, right?
Yes.
Okay. So I got the right one. You've got the right one, too, Pam, 2020.
In the recommendation, yes, it says the bylaw 2023-3-D.
Okay. On mine, it says 2020.
(Inaudible)
Okay, perfect. Okay, just wanted to get clarity on that. If there's no further question, comment, or debate on the second reading, I'll ask all in favor. All opposed? That is carried. Is there a member of council that would like to give a third reading? Councilor Evans? Sure.
Okay, for me to give both readings?
You bet.
Okay. I'll make the motion that council give third reading to bylaw 2023-03-D.
Thank you very much for that. Any comment, question, or debate on the motion? There is no comment, question, or debate? Then I will ask that council give third reading to bylaw 2023-03-0D. A motion has been made. All in favor? Did you have anything to add, Mr. Vanna?
Sorry, Madam Mayor, it, there was a typo there. It should say dash D.
Dash D, okay. So all in favor? All opposed? That is carried. Okay, perfect. So we will move back to our delegations, and then we'll jump back into our decision items in a minute. So our first delegation this morning, we have council recognition, 7.1. One of the things that council has decided to do this year is to recognize individuals and organizations in our community that we feel go above and beyond and really just stand out, or if somebody's celebrating a special birthday or anniversary or things like that. So this morning, council would like to recognize Brad Kelly as an innovative taker, organizer, volunteer, and business entrepreneur in the community. Brad is an ambassador for our community, and he really stands for what it means when we talk about pulling together. Most recently, you took part in being instrumental in organizing our Canada Day activities at the OmniPlex, and you ensured that the games were managed by the locals that you recruited. You celebrate it with your family. We appreciate this. You've been helping out with Canada Day since, I believe, 2016. You always put a smile on kids' faces and families and everything like that, so thank you very much for that. And also, most recently, you hosted the grappling tournament this spring, which was the first of its big event here in our community, organized by yourself and your gym, Straight Blast Gym. This came immediately after the Buck Creek wildfires, so we are grateful that it was an opportunity to bring the community together and to celebrate and to see so many people come together after something so devastating. So thank you again for that. We know that the Straight Blast Gym is your pride and joy, and we're very thankful to have an opportunity and a gym like this in our community that not only offers recreation, but high-quality performing members and services to our community. You're also a member of the Drayton Valley Minor Soccer Association. You are very busy, and you're out and about in the community, doing everything that you do amazingly. It runs deep in your blood, I believe. We want to thank you for the way that you enrich our community, that you pull together, and you really just shine out. So we'd like to present you with a little award, and if you want to come up, we'd like to take a little picture with you. So thank you very much. Someone else came down. I'll probably come down with these.
Boys. I'm not going down. I can't walk down the steps.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, we appreciate everything that you do, and yeah, thank you very much. And I know Canada Day, a lot of work goes into it. We hear it from our staff, too, how much work. And every year, they're like, "Again." People don't understand all the work that I find is very, very funny. Yep. Yes. (Inaudible)
Good. You got some good problems that hold up?
Right.
And I'd just like to say, a grandfather that was trying to win the giant alien, I went to, you have to get 45 tickets to get the giant alien, and by the time we got 45 tickets, I was worn down. I said, "Ruby, we gotta go."
So could you elaborate on the alien?
Well, it's just a giant blow-up alien. You need 45 tickets for it, and I thought, "Oh, okay, and she's not that great at the games." I just, oh my God. Anyway, the team that you had there was outstanding. Well done.
Yeah, it was a great celebration. The parade was great, the weather held out for us, and then, yeah, there was tons of families and entertainment and kids and cake and everything else. So, yeah, it was fantastic. So thank you so much. And, yeah, anything you need, you know where we're at and work with us, and we're more than happy to support everything that you do in the community. So thank you again. You're more than welcome to stick around for a bit, or you can, you don't have to listen to everything that we're saying, or back to the other job. Yeah, but thank you so much for coming. It was fantastic. I think, yeah, our community needed to jump back into an event and get back to normal a little bit, right? So thank you. Yeah, absolutely. Okay, we'll move along to our delegation. We have Staff Sergeant Troy Raddus, and I'm not even sure, I want to say Acting Staff Sergeant Ryan Hoopner, but that's not your title. Your title now is just Sergeant Ryan Hoopner this morning to give us the RCMP stats. So come on down and welcome. Good morning. Thanks for coming. We seem to be seeing you a lot, a lot these days, which is a good thing. It's on a good, it's on a good basis. Nobody got arrested yesterday from our council, so that we know of. There was, there was a couple counselors missing, so we're not too sure who was behind those bars, actually. Cole's still not out, yeah. We think he's on holidays, but-
I think I pushed it, bumped it. And, sorry, I kind of lost my place there, but our staffing numbers are really good, and it's very much an anomaly throughout the province and the division. Some things of note through June is we've implemented foot patrols within the community, and I'm not sure if anybody's commented or noticed, but we are trying to get members out on foot through different areas of town. I've kind of left it up to the membership. It's not a structured program as far as where or when they're patrolling, but as time allows to get them out, to make them accessible to people of the community, and to increase visibility. It's been very, very well received, lots of community interaction, and I'm hoping it's been noticed by the people of the town. For this month coming up, we have, we did just have one member transfer out. He's gone to Chautauqua. He's one of our more experienced members, but this will quickly be filled within the month. We have our new corporal coming in. She'll be a general duty corporal, experienced member coming out of B.C. We have another experienced member joining us out of the Cranbrook area, I believe?
Cranbrooke's-
Yeah. Oh, okay. Like Elkford or somewhere, Elk River, somewhere in B.C. Again, another experienced member coming to join our GIS unit. We will be receiving a new recruit throughout the summer, a brand-new grad from Depot, as well as an experienced member from Peace River later in the summer. So we are starting to draw some experienced members to the, to the area, and it really rounds off the detachment well with a group of keen young members that are new and learning, and some experienced members to guide them and keep them on the right track. So overall, I think the detachment's in better shape than it has been for a long time, and we're very excited about moving forward with some new initiatives and new ideas. Ryan and I are both very much from an operational enforcement background, so hopefully we can continue to drop our crime stats and provide service.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Any questions from administration or council? Councilor McGee?
By the way, yesterday was a real eye-opener. I've been in the facility before, and as previous mayor, you know, be at the facility. But yesterday was really, I think, a real squeeze, if I might. It really gave us a good understanding of how, how hard it is to keep morale in an office like that, because it is too small, too crowded, too everything. So we heard you, and I thought our conversation with the county went reasonably well. We had a conversation outside the detachment that went well, I think, as well. So I think we're, I think we're going to advance some of those, some of that discussion, and I'm happy to hear that. Two things come to my mind, the theft of motor vehicles. We know that there's a point in time when we have a prolific offender that goes in and out, and we see their eyes. Is there no way that we can, picture, name, any of those things? Can we not say, "Gym's out, so lock your doors"? You know, not that way, but, you know, that's, you get what I mean.
But in that way, like a picture.
It's something we have to be very, very careful with because of privacy and information we're privy to. Perhaps notices could be sent out that we're seeing a rise in a certain area, but as far as naming, once, once people are charged and before the courts, it becomes public record. But until then, because we suspect you of doing crime, or because we feel that you're out and may do crime, that's not really something we can relay to the public. I understand completely what you're saying, and, yeah, that, the prolific offenders are, they're definitely a priority of ours, and we all know that one or two prolifics being released will have a dramatic impact on our crime numbers, and we do target them. We have had great success using Central Alberta District Crew and Western Alberta District Crew to target some of these, as well as our own local resources, and try and get them back in jail as quick as we can if they're causing problems. But until they're charged, there's really not much we can do as far as releasing that information. I would if I could, trust me.
Well, and I think that's the part for me is that, you know, it's the old check under the counter, that NSF back in the days, when you get that correct, right?
Yeah, but now you're dating both of us, because I know exactly what you're talking about. If I could post that up around town, I definitely would, but I don't think that's something we have the ability to do.
And so lastly, your compliment is up. We'll have 24 in a 1985 building that was built for 12, we'll have 24 in there.
Soon, that's the goal, yeah, to just fill it right to the rafters. But I do think in talking with facilities yesterday, and I make no bones about it, this is all new to me, so I'm, I'm being educated as well as you guys as we work through this. I think there's some really good viable options, and the one thing I did take from yesterday is if the town takes the initiative on this, and I think there's several options, and some that could be very appealing as far as perhaps taking over the building after an addition's put on, that type of thing, that I think are very viable. If the town takes the initiative and takes it out of the hands of the province and the federal government, this project will move much, much quicker. I just, you heard reference to the 1911 yesterday. I got it signed off on right after our meeting and submitted it. It's being put forward today for space analysis. And what the result of that is, if they come back and say, "No, no, you guys are bursting at the seams, absolutely, you need more space." If the town chose to, they could pull back and say, "Whatever the RCMP can manage that", we will be easily five to 10 years before we see any significant movement. Whereas if the town takes the initiative and drives it, you know, this will happen much, much quicker, and the needs will be met. And just to touch on what we were talking about, and what you just referenced, the morale. Coming from the operational background, I've been 20 years in operations, and Ryan's been close to that, all operational as well. Morale is one of the most important things, and one of the things that will serve the community, or will help the RCMP serve your community well. In this day and age of defund the police, it not being very socially acceptable to be a policeman, to be seen in law enforcement, that is one of the biggest struggles within managing a detachment right now. And I see this as a big step, the members seeing it as the town very much supporting them and being a big benefit to the membership and the service they provide.
Rick, did you have your hand up? When Tom put his hand up, I wasn't sure.
Yeah, there's good.
Okay, sure. Councilor Evans?
There were four thefts of motor vehicles, zero cars, zero trucks, zero minivans, zero SUVs, zero motorcycles, four other types. So like ATVs or?
Yeah, that'll be anything not captured.
Yeah. I just kind of laughed when I saw, zero, 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 six others.
That's government.
No worries. So I guess with the addition of experienced officers, that gives you some more flexibility, I would think, with your staffing assignments and stuff. It was my understanding that if you had a rookie, if you will, they were always required to ride with someone. Was that misinformation, or is this going to give you more flexibility, if you will?
A new recruit, depending on how they do, there will be a certain amount of time that they ride directly with somebody in the same vehicle. Then after they pass a portion of their recruit field training, they will then be in their own car, but have to work parallel to their field trainer. And then generally, after about a six-month period, they're on their own, just with regular supervision, where when we bring these members in, it's just a matter of getting them familiar with our processes, the area, and they hit the ground running. It's a little more of a struggle for the members from B.C. They're on a different computer system, a few different processes, but they still hit the ground running, where this member we're bringing in from Peace River will just transition seamlessly.
Excellent. Good to hear.
Councilor Kamana?
Thank you. Yeah, first of all, thank you for the tour yesterday. It was nice to see what struggles that you have and what's working and what's not. So thank you for that. Just wondering, I've been asked, so I'm asking you now, so about your contingent and, you know, what kind of a diversity that you have on your contingent. I know a few, a few years back, there was some diversity there. Wondering how the contingent made up now, and is there any diversity?
So, sorry, just so I'm clear, you're asking about the diversity we have within our-
With the staff, yeah. With the officers, yeah.
I would say if we're talking visible minority, we have Izzy Sanford. Where's Izzy from? He's from B.C. But, yeah, he's of African-Canadian descent. And then we have three female members currently, but we're adding two more. And, yeah, that's kind of all that comes to mind. I'm not even sure if we have any French speakers right now. Yeah, and one, one young fellow from Quebec, so that's sort of how our makeup of staff is.
Perfect. No, thank you for that. Just, the community knows now that, you know, it's a diverse contingent that you have, right? So thank you very much.
So just a couple of questions for myself, kind of going back to what Councilor McGee was saying about prolific offenders, because we always talk about this, like putting their pictures up everywhere. So when they get released, then we can't say, put their pictures up to say this individual is in the- So when they get released, then we can't say, put their pictures up to say this individual is in the community now, please keep your eyes open. But when they get arrested, like prior to their release, when they get arrested, can we not post pictures? Like let's say so and so's arrested, right? Two individuals are arrested and they're charged. Can we not like have a little space in the paper that we post pictures and say, these two recent individuals have been charged with this crime? So then that way now, when they get out, we can't post their picture then, but the picture's been posted when they're in. Can you do it that way?
We can name them. I'm not sure about posting the picture. I, I can definitely check on that for you, but we can name them once they're charged.
We've talked about this in the past and it gets dicey in the fact of us posting like a prisoner photos. Cause there's rules basically under, like we can demand that photo, that's, that is a requirement. They don't get a choice in whether we take that photo. It's on the, it's on the identifications act. We get photo and prints. But then there's rules with us releasing that photo. So we don't necessarily have photos to release of them.
So if the newspaper or somebody else wanted to take their Facebook page or whatever and attach a name to it, anybody that's listening online, they could post a picture.
But as far as the photos we gather, under the identifications act, we can't release it. But if there's Facebooks that are
If there's Facebook pictures or something, we could, there's a way that other people outside of the RCMP could have put a face to that name and then say, these are the recent people that have been charged in the community. I know we've talked about this forever, but I mean, I go back to, you know, kind of Tom's comment. Or I know even there's been businesses in the town that, you know, people have stolen from her and they have their pictures right there when you walk in, right? So it's kind of, how do we, how do we stop with the prolific offenders? How do we stop with this? Cause it just seems to be that revolving door, right? So maybe there's other ways we start approaching it and looking at it and, you know?
And I would suggest the best way and what we're going to see the best results with is pressure applied up through government. So the prolific offenders perhaps spend less time on our streets and more time as guests of the, the province and the federal government.
Yeah.
Cause we can, we try and grab them as quick as we can. As soon as they give us reason and with our resourcing levels. Make sure they spend less time on the streets. But unfortunately that doesn't always result in them being a guest of the province very long.
Yeah, yeah. It's that still advocating for the judicial system, right? And the prosecutors and everything else pushing that's
And we do have to be a little careful as far as ensuring we're not encouraging any type of vigilante action by our people. Cause the last thing I want to see is a frustrated citizen get themselves into trouble because they've act, taken action.
Yeah. Yeah. And I think we hear those comments a lot because I think people are frustrated, right? So it's frustrated with the system. So they feel like they need to take matters into their own hands.
And, and I completely understand that people go to work every day. They work hard for their money. They purchase a quad. They, you know, they, they have their house and they do get extremely frustrated. Unfortunately, the position of the federal government is property rights in this country are very, very limited. And to see somebody out of frustration, um, take action that's going to result in us being forced to charge them to protect their stuff. I, I understand where they're coming from, but I'd really like them not to be in that position or to put our membership in that position.
Yeah, absolutely. So I just have one more question and then two comments. So I noticed here it says, maybe it's on the first page, spousal abuse. I know that there was a conversation, you know, I think that it was Ryan, when you were coming in saying the increase over COVID, that was kind of spiking. Are we seeing that level out or is that, are these numbers still high? Like when I look at 200 files or how is that, is that number still high?
Which, sorry, which number are you looking at?
It says there were a total of 200 files with spousal abuse, survey code in June. This brings the year to date total of 1,253. So that seems high, right? So I guess that's where I was just
Well, there's no doubt and I think our spousal assaults are in the province are a little higher than they might be in some other parts of the country. But I think things are starting to level off through, um, from COVID. But I'm not sure where exactly you're looking at, Madam Mayor.
Uh, page 15 of 19. I'm not sure if you have, do they have that? It would be your page one of five on your RCMP strategic analysis.
Yeah. So that's for the entire district.
Oh, that's for the entire?
Yeah, I included that just for comparison. That's, you'll see that referenced as the WAD municipal crime stats. So that's every municipality, then Western Alberta District, just so you have that ability.
Oh, okay. That's not here. Cause I was like, that seems really high.
We would be very concerned if that was straightened out.
We had five.
Okay, we had five. Okay. That makes me feel better. Cause I was like, maybe we need as a community to be addressing like support for families and stuff. Okay. Well, that's a little better. Okay. I was going to suggest if there's something we could do with kind of that. How is mental health supports, I guess with, with the RCMP and then kind of how that extends into the community for incidents like this and, and things like that.
We've been meeting with great success with the RPAC unit that have brought the Mountain House. It's been great help to us. And this is a little more anecdotal, but I still believe we're dealing with a really increased rate of mental health calls. And unfortunately, because of the history within the RCMP being all things to all people and the current climate within the provincial government, federal government, as far as limited supports to that, the deinstitutionalization that happened, you know, 20 years ago and all that. We're finding the membership having to deal with a lot of people, a lot of homelessness, a lot of mental health, a lot of the addictions. Members are dealing with it with very limited training because there's no place for us to turn. For matter, I mean, anecdotally, yesterday we had a person in cells. Clearly there's some long-term mental health issues, maybe resulting from addictions, resulting from whatever. Defecated all over self, all over the cells, no place to turn. The membership's dealing with this and trying to provide the support they can and make sure her physical and emotional, mental needs are being met. Because there's very few places to turn. But I think it's still elevated and we're going to try and come up with strategies. I know that the province is trying to make their RPAC team more robust and do what we can on our side. And the RPAC team's been a great help to the membership in that they're providing them directions to turn and, and what resources are available. They were unaware of before. So I think we're starting to turn a corner on this, but it's going to be a long road.
Good. Councilor Ballas, did you have something to add to that?
Thank you. Are there still a lot of Form 10s being processed and transportation being provided to outside sources?
Yes, absolutely. There are. Yeah. Two nights ago. Yeah. Yeah. The, the pro, the process for Form 10 actually through, through an online app, through, I think through AHS, that app. It has made the process easier for the members, but they are still having to do the transportation and taking time. That way we're having to call members in on overtime if we're short, you know, if we're at our minimums on shift to do transports. It is a drain, but.
Oh, your mic, Bill.
There is no other source that could be provided for transportation. It has to be through the RCMP?
Well, by a very nature of its Form 10, we're concerned that the person may be a harm to themselves or others. Therefore we can't really rely on anybody outside of a police agency to transport.
Could a community police officer or sheriff do the transportation?
Uh, it falls outside the mandate of either.
Thank you.
And Bill, do you know still, cause there was a subcommittee when, that was kind of dealing with the PAC team? And I know that there was the advocacy for a local PAC rather than being part of the larger one. Cause we just felt that those needs weren't being met. And have you heard any more? Does anybody know more on where that's at? Are we still pushing for that?
That was in the hands of that Public Safety Committee and I'm not sure who's sitting on it now, but I know Staff Sergeant Matthews at that time was actively looking into it and I'm not sure what's followed up on it.
I, I remember last council, I sat on that, I sat on that committee too, but yeah, I haven't. Haven't been on.
No, we, yeah, we had that come a few months ago, but you know, there hasn't been any movement on that, uh, local. Update on the act from Brockwood House.
I'll be perfectly honest with you. From, from my perspective, limited time I've been here, what I've seen, I don't believe that would be a great use of, of the town's money. If we want to look at increasing policing resources, that's not where I would recommend putting it. The, our, the program throughout the province is currently undergoing an expansion. They're under new leadership. They have actually quite a few new positions they've added. They're in the process of staffing. Their big hangup actually is AHS, not providing the psych nurses to ride with the members. So we're seeing our, our PAC policemen trying to do their job without the support of AHS. I anticipate that can program continuing to grow fairly robustly throughout the province. And in which case we'll benefit from it. I mean, just the addition of the one in Rocky Mountain House has been very helpful. And I mean, we'll, we'll take all the help we can get, but a full-time RPAC police officer in Drayton Valley for the town of Drayton Valley, uh, I don't think you'd see your bang for your buck.
Fair enough. Okay. Thanks. So yeah, maybe we'll kind of check in. I know I talked a little bit about that melt, a mental health team at the hospital there. You can kind of follow up with that and see about, like you said, those psych nurses to ride along with the police, right? If that's where we want to kind of be advocating, maybe we can work together of how we can move in that direction with Alberta Health Services.
And I did follow up with the Staff Sergeant in charge of PAC within the province.
Yeah.
That was news to him and he is trying to work through the AHS channels to, to find out more about this crisis team.
This crisis team that's at the hospital that no one knows about. Absolutely. Okay. Just a couple of comments that I wanted to say, when we did do the tour yesterday, there's stolen bikes. That's one of the thing we, we talked about is that bike registering program that we have. There's a not a lot of people in the community that are using that. So just kind of a shout out to people that, you know, just to maybe take the time to register your bikes, register, you know, your belongings and things like that. That way if they do get stolen, the police are able to find out who owns them and return them to people like that. And just kind of, you know, maybe it's that education piece we push out again is just a reminder. And then also when you talked about the foot patrol, I did see two RCMP outriding their bikes, um, in their uniforms. So it was nice to see they were, I'd seen them at one end of town and then about, I don't know how long later, I seen them at the other end of the town, kind of doing their rounds. And it was nice to see. So I did notice they were on bikes. Counselor McGee, did you have something to wrap it up with?
One last question. The, and I gotten the answer, I think, but members at one point in time were not allowed to take their vehicles home. So the response time was, especially in the winter, was, was difficult at best because you had to get up, do that, do that, do that, do that. Then get in the car and then get that. Has that changed or did we, did we change that at all in, in, I don't know?
All that Ryan's speaking about, my understanding is that there is limited on-call time, but when they're on-call, they're not taking a vehicle.
They, it's not that they can't, it's their choice. So, um, there is limited availability for us to mandate you taking a vehicle home to your house. So it's their choice. It does create complications with like even just going shopping after work or whatever. Not necessarily for coming home from nights, but for coming for days and stuff. So if they want to, it's available for them. Most choose not to take them home. Yeah.
Now, the, the problem we run into too is if that member takes that vehicle home and because they're on-call, they're not on shift the next day.
We have to go get it.
Are we leaving it there? Are we getting, are we getting, are we sending the member, paying the member overtime to bring it back? So the town of Drayton Valley is not that big that it's impeding their, their response time drastically.
Yeah, I would say it does add some, but it's not far to get to the detachment and back. The delay really comes in the call coming to us. If it's an active break and enter, it's still not getting to us with that on-call member 10, 15 minutes. So I mean, that, that bad chunk of time is really the crucial time.
And it, it would seem to me sometimes the visibility in your community, uh, when you see the cars displaced, but there's more to it than just that. So I, I understand that. And I, I just didn't, didn't know what the answer was. So now I, now I, that's good. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much for your time this morning, sharing the stats with us, and we look forward to seeing you again soon.
Thank you very much.
Enjoy your day. Take care. Uh, so we do have another delegation this morning. They're not going to be here till 10:30. So we'll jump back into our decision items and I'm going to skip over 9.2. And I'm going to ask Mr. Vanna come up for 9.3 and the rest of, the rest of our planning, uh, decision items this morning. So we'll go back to development permit, DV 23 dash 027 for discretionary use, crematorium use at 50, or 5605, 55th Street, Lot 29, Block 35, Plan Number 922242463. I cannot talk this morning. Good morning again, Mr. Vanna. We'll hand it over to you.
Morning, Madam Mayor. Um, yes, this is a discretionary use permit for a crematorium use at 5605 55th Street. Landowners within 60 meters of the parcel have been notified in accordance with our Planning and Development Policy, PD 01 dash 23. Proposed use is located in the Commercial General District of our land use bylaw, which provides for intense commercial uses, offering a wide variety of goods and services, including commercial retail, light industrial, funeral services and crematoriums. The crematorium use is a discretionary use under the CGEN district. The proposed use is also located in the commercial light industrial generalized category of in our future land use map in our municipal development plan. The recommendation for this discretionary use is conditional approval based on the conditions on attachment four, which are essentially our general conditions that we would apply to, to this type of a development. Those conclude my remarks. Madam Mayor?
Thank you very much for that. Any questions for administration? No questions? Counselor McGee?
And I'm sorry I missed it, but generally if you are, this is, this does not have to be advertised. It just has to be advertised as 1,600 meters around.
Madam Mayor, through Counselor McGee, this, this has followed our, our discretionary use procedure, which is that it was advertised in the paper, it was advertised in our website. It was advert, uh, and notices were also sent to all the property owners within 60 meters.
All right. That's, that, that's, it's been advertised and?
That is correct. And we have not received any, any comments or questions.
I will tell you that when I spotted it in the town's page, you, you have to, to know where that is. It's a very small picture. So you have to maneuver around. It took me a bit of time to figure out where it was going to be, but I get it now. Thanks.
Uh, and so this application is coming. It is in the commercial and light industrial area. I know that recently we changed some of the text amendment in our land use bylaw that would fit businesses like this, that would see them in areas like this rather than the residential. And that also that they would remain discretionary. So then that decision would have to come to council. Just so everybody knows, this is the first of the application that is coming and the kind of the process of why we are here for today. So if nobody has any questions on this, then what I'll be asking for is a motion from a member of council. Councilor Comanen?
Sorry. Okay. Thank you. Um, thank you that I would like to make a motion that we approve the development permit, DV 23 dash 027, subject to conditions, attachment for condition of approval, DV 23 dash 027. Thank you.
Rick, thank you very much for that. Are there any questions, comment or debate on the motion this morning? If there's none, then I'll ask all in favor. That is carried. Thank you very much for that. Moving along, we'll go to 9.4, development permit. Application DV 23 dash 28 discretionary use, heavy duty mechanic shop and automotive service repair at 5622 55th Street.
Madam Mayor, the town's received a development permit application for a heavy duty mechanic shop and automotive repair. And it's just down the street from the previous application. This is at 5622 55th Street. Once again, the, the application was advertised as per our policy. Uh, once again, the, uh, the application was, uh, advertised as per our policy. Uh, it was also sent to landowners within sixty meters as per our policy. It, uh, is also located in the CGEN commercial district. And in this particular case, uh, the, um, the use is a discretionary use. Heavy-duty mechanic is, uh, not specifically listed, but very similar to the uses and intent of the light industrial uses, uh, in our definition section. And automotive sales and service, uh, use is a discretionary use in the CGEN district. Uh, it complies with our municipal development plan. And the recommendation is to give conditional approval to DV twenty-three dash twenty-eight as per the conditions on attachment four, which is our, uh, standard conditions that would apply for this particular use.
Thank you very much for that. Any questions, Mr. Vanna? Uh, so my question is, um, automotive service use is defined under the automotive sales and service use in the CGEN commercial as discretionary. Does this seem not correct? That it shouldn't be this way? This just seems like that. I'm just questioning why this is coming as a discretionary use, right?
I, Madam Mayor, I didn't write the bylaw, but I was certainly, I'm on my way to fixing it.
Yeah.
There, there are many uses. I will, I will say this, there are many uses that are listed as discretionary that should not be discretionary and should be moved over to permitted.
Yeah.
Um, and, and that's, that's part of the, the process of, of updating and, uh, and amending the bylaw. The first of which you'll see on the agenda later on, that we're introducing a bylaw to, to help us along this process.
So as we start to amend the land use bylaw, we'll see perhaps less of these discretionary businesses coming to, to council to get approval as we?
If, if council approves, uh,
Approving those.
The, the bylaw that's being introduced, then that will drastically reduce what comes to council.
Yeah, I know that we've had a few of these come up when, uh, you know, we're questioning, I think, why they're discretionary. I don't think there's any toxic chemicals or anything here that would be of concern for this type of business in the community there. Okay, um, so if there's no other questions, I'm needing a motion from council for this decision item. Counselor Sheriffs?
I'll make the motion that council approve development permit DV twenty-three dash zero-twenty-eight, subject to conditions, attachment for, conditions of approval DV twenty-three dash twenty, zero-twenty-eight.
Thank you very much for that. Any comment, question or debate on the motion? Um, the conditions seem fairly straightforward and standard. Uh, if there's no questions, then I'll ask all in favor. And that is carried. Thank you very much. Moving on now to nine point five, text amendment bylaw twenty-two-three dash four dash D to amend the purpose and process section of the land use bylaw twenty-two-ten dash twelve dash D.
Madam Mayor, uh, text amendment bylaw twenty dash twenty-three, sorry, twenty-two-three dash four dash D is a, uh, is the first of what I would suggest should be, um, ongoing amendments to the land use bylaw. Uh, this one deals with the, uh, with two sec, the first two sections of the bylaw. Uh, in particular, it, it deals with, um, uh, the introduction or the purpose of the bylaw, and it also deals with the procedures section of the land use bylaw. It, it does not impact, uh, the regulation sections of the bylaw, and it does not change any districting, doesn't change any mapping. It's just those first two sections of the bylaw. Uh, the reason we're bringing it forward to council today is, uh, that there are also, uh, three bylaws that currently exist on the books. Ninety-five dash fourteen, which is the subdivision approving authority bylaw, ninety-five dash sixteen, which is the development authority bylaw, and bylaw two thousand and six dash fourteen dash D, which is municipal planning commission bylaw. All of these bylaws, um, are either ultra-viries, which means they are not valid because of changes in legislation. They reference, uh, sections to the act which don't exist anymore. Uh, they reference organizations that don't exist anymore. Uh, and also, in the case of the planning commission, they also reference policies and procedures or processes that council does not follow and administration does not follow. Uh, so for those reasons, um, we're making these amendments to the bylaw that will, uh, are intended to, uh, make the process, uh, of development more effective and efficient uh, and will reduce, uh, processing times uh, and will make, um, I think life's, uh, council's life a little easier in a sense of, uh, the development authority is now, uh, the CAO or the designated officers that the CAO designates. If application, if, if the designated officers don't wish to deal with an application, then they can bring it to council if they wish to do that for discretionary uses. But majority of uses will be dealt with administratively. Uh, they'll still be advertised, they'll still be notices sent out, but the decision will be made by the development authority, which is administration. Uh, in addition, we are also establishing the subdivision approving authority to be the designated officers of, CAO and designated officers. As council may be aware, um, a couple of years ago, uh, the old, well, I refer to it as the old planning commission in Watauskun was our subdivision approving authority. Uh, they have since, um, disappeared, uh, no longer in business. And it was really unclear in terms of what the heck the subdivision process was administratively. So this bylaw establishes the authority, establishes the process and procedures in terms of what's necessary to process a subdivision application. So those are essentially the, the changes, um, as per this bylaw. What administration is requesting today is that council give this bylaw, uh, first reading. And then following that, um, the bylaw will be then advertised and then brought back for a public hearing and second and third reading. So it's a text amendment twenty-two-three dash four dash D. We're seeking first reading.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Vanna this morning? Counselor Evans? Oh, oh, you were just, okay, Counselor Kamana?
Thank you. I'm just trying to understand the, the changes. Peter, I'm sorry, um, if, if, you know, this is, uh, ah, a minute question. So I was having a, a chat with, uh, one of the county councillors. I believe they are going through, um, some of the changes to, uh, STAB as well. And, uh, um, I, I believe the committee consists of the administration and a couple of councillors. Is that, you know, if, if there's any, um, the, the first, first step comes to that committee and if they, if they didn't approve it, then it either goes to the council or to the STAB. Is that, that's how I understood it, but you know, is, is it the same thing here? Or I'm talking something totally different here?
Madam Mayor, um, through the councillors, so the amendments that are being made here fall in line with what many, many, many Alberta communities do. The, uh, most decisions are made by a development officer or development authority. So one of the, one of the issues is that, is, is a, one is a staffing issue. So typically, you know, if you're going to have a committee, then you need to take, you need to take minutes. You need to establish the, you know, applications going to a committee first and then coming back to council. And then so there's, uh, there are timelines established under municipal government act, which you have twenty days in which to decide whether the application is complete or not, right? And so for it to go through these committees, or through a committee, then that takes time to do that. And then to get it to council, so you would, you would eat up your twenty days, you're more than your twenty days and you go eat up the time and the forty days in which to require a decision to be made on an application. So by the time you've advertised something, by the time you've made a decision going through these things, you can exceed that time as well as the resources in which to, to establish that. So what we're doing, what we're proposing in this amendment falls in line with what majority of municipalities in Alberta do.
Okay, no, absolutely, we, we want to.
Now, now, in, in the cases of, you know, there may be a development, uh, permit, a discretionary development permit that comes forward, in which case administration feels that it would be best suited to, to come to council and to, um, have a, a public meeting about it in front of council. And that process is in place, uh, in this amendment.
Okay, so a, as you mentioned, you know, I totally agree that we need to cut down the time, not add to it, right? And, you know, cut the red tape, um, just to, to be clear. So the, uh, application comes and then administration will deal with it. Um, if, if there's any discrepancies or anything else, then it will go to, um?
It's, it's important to understand and, and that's actually one of the interesting, that's one of the interesting parts about the existing process.
Right.
In the sense that an application can come to council. Yet, um, if, uh, the applicant doesn't like council's decision, they can appeal that decision to the STAB, of which there are no members of council on it, right? And so generally speaking, councils like to be the final stop on a decision, right? Particularly on things like districting and so forth. And, and so what this does is, you know, falls in line with other municipalities in the sense that development authority makes the decision, there's still the appeal process and, and that doesn't, you know, that doesn't go away. That's legislative, that has to be there. Um, and so from that standpoint, I say this, it aligns more with, with what common practice is.
Thank you.
Um, just to kind of maybe add a little bit to that, so I just need, um, some clarity on some things. So we don't need to make a motion to repeal these three?
Madam Mayor, that, that will happen, uh, as, as third reading is given
Okay.
to the bylaw, it'll, it'll automatically repeal those, those other bylaws.
Okay, and then are we able to do all three in one reading?
Uh, no, Madam Mayor, we, we, uh, we need to get first reading
Yeah.
of the bylaw today. It's really, we're introducing it.
Items, the three, um, proposed amendments, I guess, that's what I mean.
Yeah.
We can do those all in one reading? We don't have to have separate readings for those?
That's all part of the bylaw, that's just first reading, yes.
Okay, and then again, back to the, um, subdivision approval. So the subdivision approval at no point will come to council? Is that what the proposal is?
That's correct, yes.
Okay.
Now, subdivisions can be appealed, as, as can development permits. They can be appealed to a development subdivision and development appeal board, um, to look at that. That doesn't, that doesn't stop a, that doesn't stop, uh, the subdivision approving authority from bringing something to council to, to, uh, to review and, and make a decision on as well.
Okay, and then you said that's the norm. I'm just trying to think, I mean, it's been, it's been a while, but I know like in other municipalities that the subdivisions come, they're prepared, um, circulations go out and things like that. Because I know when you talked about the forty-day processing, there still has to be referrals that are going to AER and everything like that. But I know that the subdivision decision, once that file is built, still comes for the approval of the council, right? So?
What I will say is that for direct control districts,
Yeah.
council is the development approving authority.
For direct control.
For direct control districts. So applications would come to council for that decision unless council delegates it to the authority.
Counselor Ballas, did you have a question?
Thank you. I guess the only concern I would have is communication, is keeping council up to date as to what's happening. Because the worst thing I hate is being questioned on the street when people know before us. So how is that going to be communicated to council that we know that there is a, a subdivision or a discretionary, a business being, uh, processed?
So, uh, as, as mentioned, Madam Mayor, um, we do advertise those and we do circulate those. And, and certainly if, if council wishes, we can, we can include those as part of, like, we have reports that come to council. Should be having reports that come to council every two weeks anyway. So they can be included as, as part of that.
Okay, uh, so what, um, needing a motion from, uh, a member of council, um, on this, if there's no further questions. I do have, um, I understand that, um, one of the things when we're amending our land use bylaw is just to streamline and reduce red tape and do all that. Um, and I understand that, and I think that there definitely are some bylaws that need to be repealed and we need to be ensuring that, um, we're following current, uh, legislation and the changes in the MGA and things like that and organizations. I'm just not sure how I feel about the subdivision, um, approval to council because I would need to find more information just to see for myself how other municipalities and how and why that's changed, right? I'm used to doing it this way, so I'm not quite understanding why we're changing to this. So for me, I, I'm not sure how I feel about that because I need to understand it a little bit better and then look at other maybe municipalities of why that transition has made, if it's working and things like that. So I am needing a, a motion, if there's no other questions. Counselor Ballas?
Thank you. I move that council get first reading to bylaw twenty-two-three dash four dash D as presented.
Thank you very much for that. Uh, any further comment, question or debate on the motion? Then I'll ask all in favor. All opposed? And that is carried. Thank you very much for that. And that is it for our decision items for, um, development today. And we'll jump back to nine point two, which is the community grants, third quarter allocation. Did you want to have a quick little break? This is our community grants, third quarter allocation. Uh, it does say Lola Strand on here, but I think Hans von Klaveren will be, um, presenting. So, good morning, welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and, uh, to the rest of council. So Lola is on, uh, holiday, so yes, that's why I'm here. So in front of you, you have the quarter three, uh, community grant applications, uh, for your consideration. Uh, those, as you know, uh, consist of two different grants. We have the Roger Coles Memorial Sports Grant and we have the Community Events Grant. For both of those, uh, we got, uh, two each applications, uh, received. So administration goes over them, uh, and takes the criteria at hand to give you a recommendation. So from the two, uh, recommendations are the two applications here for Roger Coles, the Memorial Youth Sports Grant. One application was for nationals, uh, in volleyball that already happened. Uh, this was, uh, uh, recommended and approved based on the criteria by the committee. And the other one is for an invitational. As you most likely know, invitational is not gearing up to a, uh, to declare a winner or at least a championship, uh, in that, uh, uh, sense. So this one was, uh, not, uh, meeting the criteria. The other two, uh, that are, uh, received for the Community Events Grant, one of those is, uh, one that we've seen earlier as well, is for a community event, a running event at the Pembina Nordic, uh, Ski Club. It's the Turkey Trot in the fall. Uh, this does meet the criteria. It's a community, uh, event that everybody can enjoy. And the other one is for the internal, the Drayton Valley and District of, uh, Chamber of Commerce Gala. This is an internal event for their members and that does not meet the criteria. In that sense, we have two, uh, uh, applications that are awarded for a total of two thousand nineteen dollars and sixty cents. In the overview and the attachments, you see what we already, uh, approved in the previous, uh, two quarters and what we, based on this recommendation, will have left for quarter number four. So with this, let's say the two thousand dollars, uh, being approved right now, there will be from the four and a half thousand dollars left in the, uh, community grants, two and a half thousand dollars left over for quarter four to consider at a later date when we go over the applications that will, we will receive and we know we will receive a couple of them in the fall. So with that, uh, I would say the recommendation is, uh, that council approve the two thousand twenty-three third quarter Town of Drayton Valley's Community Grants allocations for a total of two thousand nineteen dollars and sixty cents. Thank you, and I'll take questions.
Perfect, thank you very much for that. Any questions? No, is there a member of council that'd like to make a motion? Counselor Sheriff?
I made a, um, motion that the council approved the twenty-two-three third quarter Town of Drayton Valley Community Grant allocations for a total of two thousand nineteen dollars and sixty cents as presented.
Thank you very much for that. Any comment, question or debate on the motion? Uh, just to get some clarity, so we have the, um, the one individual for the volleyball nationals, which is recommended, and that was the recommendation. And then as well as the Pembina Nordic Ski Club for the- and that was the recommendation, and then as well as the Pembina Nordic Ski Club for the run that is in October. Um so for the Drayton Valley and District Chamber of Commerce, um did they not get the, receive this last year? Or was this for something else?
Um, thank you for that question, and to my memory, yes, they did receive, but it was not based on the recommendation at that moment either. So it was a com- uh discussion, of course, council has discretion to take their own decision in that sense. So there was a certain amount awarded in the previous year.
Okay, perfect, okay, so there's a motion on the table, if there's no further comment, question or debate, then I'll ask all in favor. And that is carried, thank you very much, and I think before you go away, Hans, um maybe Hans will get you to stay there, because we'll jump into department reports, uh Tom Thompson isn't here for our protective and emergency services, and it says that you are doing ten point two, which is our municipal service department report? Sure, you're you're on for the next two, ten point two and ten point three. Morning, come on in, just grab a seat, we're just uh still doing our report, so.
That's, no, that's fine, can do that. Thank you, Madam Mayor, and uh through to the rest of council. So the two reports that you have in front of you are, the one is the municipal services deport, and uh I can do that the this coming two weeks, basically, I take uh as a, say, a task extra on because of Shelley being on holidays. So for the water treatment plant distribution, uh you see that things are uh working. Uh we are working diligently on the items that are part of the uh uh regular maintenance and regular scheduled items. Uh vibration testing uh is scheduled for October, so those things will be giving us, of course, indications of uh how we are doing. The hydrant flushing that currently uh is happening, we put some extra effort in with the extra staffing, and we see that we are, of course, encountering what we do with hydrant flushing all the time, running into repairs that are needed. So at the moment that we see those repairs uh being uh, let's say, absolutely necessary, we'll uh go into those. And that will determine as well, of course, how much in the budget we will uh basically go into this years, what we can do and see uh to mitigate failures on those hydrants. The water treatment uh waste uh treatment plant, um we see, of course, our testing that we do on a regular basis. And as you can see, the acute sampling, um we are, of course, making sure that we do diligently working on those uh uh quality uh samplings, and when we see those, uh we have to address that. So we have an on- can uh ongoing uh situation that we are testing, monitoring and have to address still, making sure that we will go towards a positive testing. Uh on the landfill engineering, the biggest item, of course, is the start of the construction in cell four E. Uh Sonny's working with that, uh the rollout is happening, uh regulatory, there's things, of course, communication is important towards uh the community, but also the residents uh straight away around it. Uh but it's uh in progress, and uh we see with the constructor that we hopefully uh get that, let's say, as planned, on budget and on time. When I scroll down further. It was too fast for me, oh, thank you, paper was easier than when you leave your mouse on your desk, thanks. Um Fiftieth Avenue, um in uh my asks as well to the staff is uh what will the community see on Fiftieth Avenue when you see the signs out there saying, hey, uh expect delays in the first two days? People didn't uh encounter delays yet, but we have the rollout today, um after the first initial safety meetings yesterday with the contractor, uh making sure that they are demobbing uh as of today. So the community will experience, of course, uh let's say, uh traffic direction and delays on the work that starts on Fiftieth. It's a long-term uh commitment for the community to see this and encounter this. So we hopefully see, of course, uh let's say, uh understanding for any inconvenience that it will have, not only this year, but when we continue with that project uh later on as well. Um in public works, um the the B lands, uh we are cleaning that still up, and we are, of course, in administration, working on the, in the background as well, to uh make up a process with the count, uh council, make sure in which direction we will go in the near future. Uh all the other work that you see is uh basically our standard work, and with the current season, normally in the summertime, you see a little bit tapering off of the growth of our, let's say weeds slash grass. Uh doesn't happen yet, we have a goo- good growing season, so we're still working on that. Uh same as in parks, uh where that's a a big item, of course. Uh I know from the other side that this week we'll continue working with parks and public works on the expansion of the disco of course, so we'll get the uh initiative takers out there as well and making sure that we can go in there uh at the end of this week, hopefully. Uh all summer staff has started, uh we're all ready, let's say, in the first weeks of summer, but we keep those uh summer staff as long as possible to make sure that we have a season. Last year, we know, of course, that council directed us to get some extra funding in there. Um with that not being straight away in place, we might, will make sure that we have enough staff, enough work happening that we will uh make sure that our uh town is beautiful. With that, I'll turn it over to you for questions.
Thank you very much for that, any questions this morning for Hans? Be mindful that uh this is not his department, but he will do his best in Elviro as well, so. Go ahead, Counselor Sheriff.
Um I was wondering if you can maybe do an update on the line painting, because I've had a few questions, and I know I asked our group chat yesterday and I got a little bit of response, but just for the public's knowledge.
Thank you for that question, Counselor Sheriffs and through to the rest of council. So line painting started, or as most of the public sees, in a certain area when you live or drive through that area. So uh we call it uh, let's say, length or directional painting, so the the long lines and the features. So the features started to be painted in the east and northeast uh corner of town. So people see that uh happening on an outrolling basis. So when there's anything that's really different than the first initial information that we provide through communications, we'll get that out, of course, with our communications department, but it rolled out and people will see it ongoing. Any additions?
Um I think, I think the question arose because there was a slight delay due to weather, and we just can't, um. It is weather dependent, and the company does excellent work, and they want their uh work to to look good, it's a reflection on them, and also we want the roads and the line painting to look good. So it makes it really complicated when the weather is, you know, e- even if it's just drizzling and and such, it has to be dry conditioned. So um the work will be done as quickly as possible and is ongoing, but is very, very dependent on what happens with the weather. So we just ask the public to be mindful of that, but um that that is when weather dependent.
Counselor McGee?
Two quick questions, um crack ceiling, i- is that done by our local group, or is it, are are we contracting that?
It's contracted out, contracted out, and we were very, very pleased with with the um amount they were able to do, um the price and the quality of the work. So uh the the team was really pleased with what we got accomplished this year. Um but yes, it is contracted out, both crack ceiling and line painting. Um it makes, it frees up our staff to do a lot of the regular maintenance and stuff that comes in. Um and and I don't, not certain that we've tried doing it, like a whole section of road like that by ourselves, but yeah, it's contracted out.
Well, I only know that there was somebody working at two in the morning, um so there, I thought, it can't be our folks, so.
No.
The other thing is that when we tr- tried crack ceiling, we actually sold that crack ceiling machine because it didn't, it didn't adhere. But this stuff seems to be adhering, and the last piece is Millennium Park. We contracted our, uh it's the old skateboard or not, it's a skateboard park, so that that broad area there, um which has lots of um trees and shrubs and things like that. We contracted it out, I think, last year, and they did uh some really good work and mulched and things like that. But I was by the other day and I thought we should just put a little asterisk there to have somebody do a drive by and.
Discovery, is that the park?
Discovery.
Discovery Park?
Where's Millennium? Sorry.
Yeah, no, as you were talking, I realized, I th- I I believe it's Discovery Park.
It is.
Um, yeah, certainly, let's, let's put a.
Just a heads up.
A little effort there, I, you know, it is a beautiful park, and it does require a little extra because of what's there. And so um we, when Shelley's back, we're going to reevaluate um the progress that we have been able to make internally with our team and then see if there's a need to um contract certain things out. And on that note, I just wanted to update council as well, that we are looking at the south entrance, the opposite of the Derrick's section, and so we're looking at what that would cost to um either make it just a grass hill again or do something low maintenance there. Um and yeah, so eh we're working on that, should be done in the next, I would say, probably in the next few weeks to a month, but we are working on it and we are going to make sure that it's beautiful on that end, both sides of the road.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Evans?
Uh just a question about the uh wood chips from the the B lands. Uh are we hauling those away, or are we hauling them to the landfill and using them for for day cover? I noticed there's some pretty big piles there uh in behind, like Burger Bear in there, and it looks pretty dirty. I don't know if we could use them for landscaping, so I ju- I just want to make sure we're not just.
Landscaping at the south entrance.
Taking advantage of them being there, what's that?
Landscaping at the south entrance.
There you go, well, I don't know if we want to use that stuff, like I say, it's pretty, it it looks pretty dirty, it looks like there's a lot of soil in there, but it would be good day cover if you could just follow up with Sonny and make sure that's where it's going if we're hauling it away.
Yeah, thank you for the uh suggesting, Counselor Evans, and make, we'll make sure that we continue, continue talking about that, and maybe they have already considered, thank you.
Perfect, well, if there's no other questions, thank you very much for your report. Uh our second delegation is here, so I'm going to move away from our department reports and we'll come back a little bit later. So thank you very much for presenting that. Um so we will jump back to, kind of all over the place this morning with this. Jumping back to uh number seven, which is our delegations, uh this morning we have A J N Panel System and Jade Presentation here. Peter Levant has uh brought a few people with him to present a proposal to the community for us. So what we'll do, good morning, welcome, thank you so much for coming. We do have um some people that are online as well as the people that are in the room. So what we'll do is we'll ask you to come down to the podium, whoever would like to present. Um and then the rest of you can either move in a little bit closer or you can stay where you're at. Um and then we'll just ensure that the mic is on, so um the people online can can listen to what. Yeah, sure. If you want to, want to sit there as well, Peter, you can, in that chair there. Yeah, you can sit there, Peter. This is Elvira, Elvira's our acting C A O, Pam is our, Pam is right there, so thank you for coming. Uh so we do have your presentation up there online, can the, can you see it up here?
Yeah.
Above me? It is above me? Okay, so you can see it above me, so you will have a little clicker, is there a little clicker there? Uh Elvira uh will give that to you, Ms. Thompson, and then you can use that to go through your slides, is it working, Elvira?
This is just to, if you want to.
Okay. I have a different presentation.
Okay, oh, okay, yep.
Sorry, what was that? Oh, do you have a different presentation? Do you have a little thumb drive that we could put it on? Yeah, if you give it, yep, sure.
Do a little sound drive?
Uh so can I do this?
What we're gonna have you do is join the meeting and then present your screen.
I have the time.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So maybe what we're do- what we're doing while they get that is if Peter, if you'd like to, maybe you can have a seat, we'll turn on your mic, and then if you want to introduce yourself and everybody that you've brought with you today.
Well, okay, hello, council, I'm involved in the jade industry. My name is Peter LaBent, I'm from Saint Paul, Alberta. And uh I've been selling jade to China for for a few years, many, many tons, and I, and uh and when I did see Danielle Smith in in Edmonton at the Agriplex, uh we talked about the jade industry, and she said if she got in as as the premier, she would sponsor it in Alberta. And that's when I happened to meet Nancy Dobbs, and she said she would be interested to talk about it also. Uh so that's why I have my my friends today, that'll that'll provide a very professional, professional um uh um no presentation, because we can also put up a big, big shop for the, for the panel system with um with uh with the A G N company, him and his wife, Mohammed is his name. And then I brought along Ken, Ken Cash, or um.
Sean?
Uh Cashner. Yeah, Sean Cashner, he used to be with Sean Ox- uh Cashner's Auctions from Edmonton, Alberta for many, many years, and he can provide the the sales for the jade uh throughout the world with his connections. So it would be a very good, very good project that if you people did get in with the jade, it's a very good profitable thing. And uh and we would be joining up with the, with the, with the A G N company to have our facility installed with the, with the factory that they will be uh, what they're setting up for the panel system, which is a very well-known system across Canada today, because they have been approved by the federal government for a two-point-three uh their million-dollar grant, which they are doing a factory right now in New Brunswick, and they can open up a second factory here in Drayton Valley. So thank you very much, Nancy, for having us come over, and we will give the speaker to Mohammed.
Thank you very.
You got the floor.
Thank you very much, uh can you just make sure that the mics are on? So good morning, thank you very much for coming, if you just want to introduce yourself, and then we'll let you go ahead with your presentation.
I'm Astra from A G N, I'm CEO, and Mohammed.
Yeah, we, we are from the A G N Investment and Development Company, and we are from the Alberta, and.
So can you see it up here too? Oh, you can't.
You can see yourself there, okay. Oh, you're up there talking, panels are there.
So this panel system, we. So ten, this panel system. For the waters, what to protect, created from four hours. Soundproof, all these things, so we, however, let's say, all approved and. For, how do we, I need to restart, using can. And first thing we approach is the land in Canada, federal, like the system, we to open the arm. So first we open, first we are working on, suppose we start the factory. But, see that. So everybody's asking, okay, we are from a position in Alberta, it's not open, so, what, same thing. So let's see, let's say, it's supposed to happen. But anyway, so we want to open in Alberta, but uh county and. This is, people are explaining about the. And this is the product, the walk-in system, this is the one of the best project around the world. And we can, since we started and this project, so that, all of our, you want to. In the world right now, station cars is very great. Thousand eight, our company, you know, change to happen, I decided to stop.
Okay, sorry, so two thousand eight, we decided, okay, somehow, we are. Okay, sorry. So 2008, we decided, okay, somehow we are basically our professional is the builder. We build the houses from last twenty years. And we decided, okay, we should introduce some different products so which control the price for anybody can afford the house. So affordable housing we had. So from 2008, we start innovated this product. And we have couple of engineer around the world. We finally come up with the plan. So these products don't require any framing to build your house. Laterally, we can finish the house in one week. We are building some right now in Edmonton and the Milet, we are doing one project. We are doing construction all all around the world from this product, this product, but except Canada. Canada take us to ten years to get all the approval from the C S A. This takes too long, but now federal Atlantic Canada, they are really interested to use this product. Because it's the main reason of this product is the four hours fire rated. You can use anywhere, even in the farming is the waterproof. And and so many right now, when we build the houses duplexes, you have the somebody in the in the bedroom in the night, if they are doing music, you can hear in the next room. So this product, only product in the world have fifty-two D B. Nothing in the world up to thirty-two is the maximum they use in the industrial. So so many advantage of this product. That's why all the Canadian and U S, they wants to use this product. Environmental friendly and friendly and easy to use. Uh, this is so recyclable after ten years, say, what you have the wall, you want to decide no chain the wall, so you can take the wall out, use it somewhere else. So you don't need to worry like this is recyclable product. And the main reason we are here today. Two reason we have, AGN have the two reason for everywhere. So that's why me and my wife decided, okay, let's do and do every province what we can do for the new generation. So first reason, vision is we have to create the jobs. Right after affordable housing, which two things is very important. There is so many more things around the world required, but since we are doing meetings all over the world, all over the country, everybody want these two things right away. So we can create the job any town up to hundred to two hundred job next two years with this production line. Once we open the factory, so we have to set up the factory. Main concern, everybody have question, okay, this factory if we open, do we have enough time? In New Brunswick, we are not even open the factory as five years product is pre-sold. People sign up already, all the builders. And we can't even like if you open in here is uh in Alberta, we can't even cover one factory, it's only Edmonton area. If you do south in Calgary, we have to set up another factory. So that's huge. And raw material, if you open the factory, there is so many business will be going to be more effective, is going to be more busy. So there is so many different, different size of the panels. So this is the basic which I explain you. And we have all this certification in the place, like all over the world, like U L C, like from the Q A R, like A S T M from the U S also, and U S also, they are asking us to set up the factory in the Philadelphia. And they are giving good incentive also. So we are, we are planning, but all is the beside. We want to open first our factory in Canada. Before that, we don't want to open anywhere. Because that's the main our concept. Because when we go around the world, we want to see this is the made in Canada. So that has to be first factory. We want to open in Canada. So in New Brunswick, we are working on it. But if it's the main important, if you open set up the factory in Alberta, that's going to be main help. It's going to be affect lots for everywhere. Because all over the world, once we set up first factory, all over the world, every country will open. There is so many things visitor will come, training, all that is going to be head office in Alberta. That's why we are focusing. So which I explained already before the slide, this is our main mission and vision. Employment and affordable housing. Laterally, we can control forty percent less what we are paying right now in the construction market. So that's very simple. And main important thing, we were in the development business, in the housing business. You will see water damage in the basement, somebody buying the house, next day somebody problem, water damage, so much rain, water damage. Some people can't afford to fix those things. So this product, if you have the room here, if you fill the water, it's not going to damage any of your wall. It doesn't go to another room. So we have all. So this is our mission, which already I explained. So basically, this is not only AGN. Like we did, we started, but we want everybody to be joined. We cannot do ourselves to go it. So like if we came here, if we work together, we can see next ten years, we can see a lot of changes. So first thing, we have to work together on this product. This product is good, it's all approved all over the world. It's only important is your community is very important, like our council, me, everybody has to work together. So we have to know, we have to decide how we move forward. Like this is the key feature which already I explained. And this is the government of Karr, you can go in our website. They are really excited. They wants to set up the factory all over the world. So Atlantic Canada is gave us the already they approve everything and anywhere in the Canada, they are opening, they are willing to help us wherever we want to set up the factory. Because up to two hundred employment we are creating is the huge turnaround. Plus, we are investing each place almost more than five million dollar to set up the factory, is the county and what they are providing. So basically for these, this is the market next. Presently, hundred and twelve billion dollar mark each for the our product all over the world required at the moment. So that's why every country, because of we patent own this one, they want us to be set up the factory everywhere. So this is the globally, I'm I'm leaving this slide, you can go through this later. But in twenty twenty-seven, like twenty thirty is the vision, maybe you heard this, every country is doing twenty thirty. Is going to be prefabricated panels wall all over the construction places. Because so many reason, if somebody doing construction, they have trucks coming, they are coming this like drywall come, like we are using drywall for many years. If fire come, doesn't last for two minutes. So that is our main concern to introducing this product. This one four hours fire rated. So this is the main import, like that's why we are here. What is the benefit for and you have already brochure, already I send it to you that says about the product of the more detail. So this is our we are going to be create the jobs and the future is going to be have lot of construction advantage and employment. So saving is up to thirty, forty percent saving for each construction. So if we like we heard many time, affordable housing, affordable housing, we heard many time with everybody with the news and everywhere, but we seen little bit, but we don't see much. Because where the population is growing, that way, that pace, we are not like we supposed to do that pace also. Like if you have hundred, one million, one million population and we are just looking for hundred houses, not going to be work. Both is going to be short of the houses, is going to be increased. So we have to think next two years, what we want to do. So that's why AGN here. Next two years, we guarantee every month, we can build this many houses everywhere and we can do perk. More houses, we are doing affordable, creating the same time more jobs. If you do thousand, thousand houses, we are creating the more jobs here. Like facility for one set of the equipment, we can create two hundred jobs. If you have more than we can set up another lane, then we can run another hundred jobs. So we have job and affordable housing easy. So this is all basic, the market size, our study each factory. So this is the perfect time everywhere, everybody need to require this financial, which I'm going to, this is one what we expecting from the town, what we are like, what we got it from the New Brunswick. So land and you know, some assistance and training program before the factory, we have to set up three months training programs also. All those things we can discuss later when you guys have time. So this is all our projects, what we are doing around the world. And I don't want to take much time, so this is really brief, we want to explain you. So that's all is our side. So if you guys have any questions, so please let us know.
Well, thank you very much for your presentation. What I'll do is I'll open it up for questions from council now. Counsel Gomana?
Thank you and thank you very much for coming here today and presenting to us.
You're welcome.
So I'm just trying to understand, um, you know, you have a product, um, and you have set that up in uh Atlantic points, as you said, New Brunswick, right? So um, you are going through a process of setting up a factory there, or you already have a factory? And they are, as the province, they are supporting you. And uh, I'm not sure which municipality that's this is going to be set up. Um, I I guess uh, the bottom line is, of course, I need to understand a little bit more about the product and and the viability of the product, but uh, as as a municipality, what what is the ask from us? And also uh, how does the the province uh, or any other grants out there will join together, like you said, you know, uh, work together to to make this uh viable in our community?
Very simple. In Atlantic, in the New Brunswick, right? We are under construction, so hopefully in six, seven, this will be start. For your question is how you can join. So we are here because we don't know anything about Drayton Valley. First of all, we'd have to find the line which you have to support, which line we can settle. And secondly, in the Drayton Valley, we can set up job fair to bring the people and they can have the job. And other side is the main important, which I didn't, I need to explain today. How we are planning the future, for example, just I'll take two minutes, I'll quickly explain your for example, in the city, if somebody buying the house for half million dollar. What we are focusing that I didn't explain today, like what we are telling you, okay, half million dollar house, we can build same house for under three hundred thousand. If somebody leaving the city, you have to pay twenty-five percent down, which is hundred and twenty-five thousand. So if you come little like half an hour far from the city, same house, you're buying for under three hundred thousand. So this way, we can set up the, set up the farm factory. And this way, these people will come and they have the job guarantee also with our factory. So in three hundred thousand, and now you have mortgage for a hundred and seventy-five thousand only, and plus you have the job. So that's how exactly we are focusing, that's exactly we are doing in New Brunswick. So they already give the line for the develop, but it doesn't mean you have to do same thing. But for sure, from your community, we expecting we need to have the line and your program, how we can set up the factory. Thus you have to provide. I I hope I answer your question. Little bit out, I think.
No, no, so someone, no, thank you. Um, I'll let the other counselors ask questions and yeah, come back to that.
So yeah, in your presentation, I think you said uh, you needed five to ten acres?
That's right.
That's right, five to ten acres? Um, and what is the size of the factory?
Uh, almost twenty thousand square feet. I share the pictures.
Twenty thousand square feet?
Yeah.
And would you be looking at the second factory to be the same size, twenty thousand it would have?
Yeah, same. So I have picture also here for the factory. This one.
That's the one that's being built in New Brunswick?
Uh, under construction right now. It'll take another six, seven months.
Or six, seven months and it'll be up and and running? Um, and you said that orders are already being taken?
Yeah, five years.
Five years.
For five years? Um, and so it's not being made anywhere else, or is it being, are the panels being made?
Right now, we have the factory in China,
Okay.
which we are supporting all of all of other places.
Okay, so the fact, so that's where the product is coming to support the builds that you showed.
That's right.
Okay, so then you're looking at bringing it to Canada, one location, New Brunswick, one in Alberta. Um, you did say up to two hundred jobs. What type of training is required?
First of all, labor, labor training, how we do the all the based on the factory equipment string, thus the training. And secondly, installation. And like from the plumbing, heating person, how they work on these panels. So all the trades training. Because we have the certificate course for this to use the panel for almost sixty days training.
Also, there's a certificate course that's required?
So because of the I S O also require the training for the safety. So they have the approval for each factory, they will come and train on that site, on their department too. So because this factory, we are doing completely I S O and safety concern. So this is very important, because to sell this product around everywhere has to be I S O certificate. Without that, we cannot sell this product anywhere.
And what is the size and the weight of a panel?
Basically, it'll come in the sizes two feet by eight feet. But want to change here, the way size is going to be ten feet, two by eight, we are planning to do here locally. And weight, we are looking for thirty K G till sixty, depends on the thickness.
Any other questions from council? Counsel Evans?
So thirty to sixty kilograms per panel?
That's right. Compared to, I'm sorry, I'm
Go ahead.
Compared to when we are doing two by eight drywall and the framing, that is going to be fifty-eight point five K G. And our panel is going to be around between forty-two to fifty K G. If you weight wise, if you calculating both. So our panel is going to be lighter, but it's stronger than the concrete wall. Sorry, go ahead.
It's okay. Um, you 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 kind of answered the question. So significantly lighter than existing uh uh, concrete panels that are out there.
Really.
Right.
And concrete panel have the issue, you get a lot of mold. The concrete, this panel is the mold free. This is the only panel in the world, you don't get the mold on.
So you're saying every other panel in the world gets mold?
Hundred percent.
Okay, I guess there's, there's a lot of buildings out there that
That's why I think.
So can this be, uh, and and that speaks to your, to your, it being uh, water resistant or waterproof?
That's right.
Uh, so is is it structurally um strong enough to use for a basement? Would you build your basement with it?
No, this one in C S A, they didn't approve for the basement until we do the steel structure, then you can do the basement. So this has to be on the basement, is going to be non-load bearing. So this has to be steel structure. And then we can use just the wall, not the load bearing.
I see. So you'd have another structural member that would carry the load and this would simply fill in the
That's right.
Area.
That's right.
But it's waterproof enough that there, it it will resist or stop infiltration from groundwater?
Yeah. Water like, just like you can make the swimming pool with this panel. You don't need any other. Doesn't go water, doesn't matter if you stay. When they have the original C S A testing policy here, they keep our panel three months in the warm water. Test it. So that's how they did the test, so.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Sheriff?
So, um, hi. It's called a wall panel. Is it used for floors as well? Is there a weight limit that it can handle?
Not really. Depends every project, say about if you have something Not really, depends, every project, say about if you have something, say about pool, prayer, cool area or something, so we use the different thickness.
Okay, so there's different thicknesses that you'd use for a floor, let's say you have a two-story house, right?
That's right, you can use the floor.
Do you know the weight limit, is there a weight limit?
Like.
Is it quite durable?
Yeah, quite durable, yeah, but every eight feet, uh, you have to have a frame. So I will send you on the, some video, I'll share you the complete building, how we built in the past, so then you can see, you can see that.
Okay, appreciate it.
Go ahead, do you have another one, Rick?
So the interior finish, uh, is the, uh. It is, is the finish that the panel comes with, the, the final finish, and do you, do you mud it like a, like a drywall panel, do you mud the?
No.
The joints or?
We have to do the joints after electrical, mechanical, everything, then we have the same, uh, it's called the calcium silicate board. That's the finish we will put in on the top, you don't need to do sanding or anything, that's why it's the green product. But sooner you start sanding, then we don't get the lead certificate.
Okay, and, and how do you get your, your electrical, uh, plumbing, et cetera, w- within those, or do you, or do you exterior now?
Same like, uh, how like, say about when we are doing framing, right, same thing we do, steel structure. Then the drywall, our wall, then we cut the wall, we have the equipment, it'll cut the wall, it'll get the electrical, everything on that. Then after that, we close, with the same material, we close the hole, whatever is the holes we make.
So you cut your, cut the surface of the panel through and then lay everything in there and then mud it?
That's right, yeah.
Okay.
So.
There is a lot of more questions, so but I will, I will send you the, all the details, installation, videos and everything. Because I know it is, it's not going to be understand completely in just.
So it's replacing, I guess, your, your two-by-fours, like your framing and your drywall, right?
That's right, and insulation.
And your ins- oh, and your insulation.
Yeah, what insulation value is R forty-eight.
Okay, R forty-eight is the value, okay, Counselor Kamana?
Thank you, um, I'm sure, you know, you've mentioned that in your presentation and all that, but I would like to know a little bit more about you, yourself and your background.
So myself, I'm engineer, and she is my interior designer, she is my wife.
We work together.
We work together, and we are builder, we build the houses from two thousand and five in Edmonton area. Then that's why we decided, like, we know we on the field, so we saw so many home warranty issues, more of the water damage. Somebody have good party in the new house, I seen some people, they throw, kids throw the toy, toys on the party. And the flush is damaged next day, and it's mold, and it's a lot of expense for the builder and developer and client, it's also. But anyway, so that's why we decided this one, okay, we should introduce something new. So this one, like especially main reason on this, two thing we intend, we are work on this product, one. Costing. Because if you see, if you do like this, after five years, I don't think so anybody can afford the house. Mortgage rates and builder, because we know we build the house, we are buying expensive, we have no choice to sell. And secondly, is the fire. That's the main important. Even we see this fire all over, if you put the panel on the farms, boundary wall, fire doesn't come on the side. It's not only interior, you can use anywhere. The farm, farming, even you are doing the water divided in the farm, you put this panel in, it's very easy. Less cost and faster way.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Monica?
One more question, uh, this, when was the first house you built with these panels and has it been lived in? And has there been any shifting issues, structured issues?
No.
Any feedback from that? How old is the first standing and lived in house?
We build houses here, not here, first houses we are building here, like we already under construction in Canada. But outside, we are building this for almost two, no, ten years, so there is no issue.
No issues?
Because, uh, main, main problem though, when you have the shifting house, as soon as you have, this one video, we are going to be give you also, here you can see later. All the wood framing. Is always had the shifting issue, but we are using complete our steel structure. So there is not much shifting issues.
And you have all the certifications that you showed us there for this product, uh, and then, did you say that you received a federal grant for this product as well?
It's on website.
It's on your website, okay?
Website also, and like federal, they always say anywhere you open, say Alberta have the different program, something. Said when we are ready, so we have to tell them and they will work it on. So it's basically, say about if we set up here, then your Drayton wall is going to be all over the federal, okay, this is the factory opening here.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's going, it's lot of traffic and lot of people will come and change many things, so.
And when are you expecting like timeline, is this something that you'd like to see at your second factory here? You know, starting this year, starting next year, what are we looking at when we're looking at timeline?
We want to do ASAP.
ASAP, okay.
Because, uh, the reason is. We want to open our main factory because we are in Alberta, our corporation from Alberta, we want to see our factory Alberta first.
Yeah.
Or, but. First we, uh, as soon as we submit to the approval, for some reason, we, they connect us to the CSA, connect us to the Atlantic Canada, that's why we went there. So that's why, because they know this product is going to be huge change in the market.
Yeah.
So with that. UK and Poland, this all this country, they approve and they wants to see us over there in the meeting, we have already Zoom meeting. So like all over the world, they want this panel system.
Wow.
Yeah, you're saving time and money, everything, it's gonna be affordable house for the younger generation, it's gonna be very good.
Yeah, it's pretty neat, thank you.
It, it's, uh, yeah, it's affordable house, but it's going to be different, it's, it's not like a drywall, it's going to be very strong.
Uh, do we have any questions from administration that we'd want to ask now, or do we want to wait till the next kind of steps? Yeah, we're okay with waiting, okay, any other questions from council, Counselor McGee?
So. In the normal case, uh, someone would say, I want to build a factory in Edmonton or Kalmar or Drayton Valley. And they would come into town and they would say, um, do you have any land? Say, yes, of course we have land, what's the price of your, this much, is the land serviced? Not yet, who's going to service the land, then we'll have that discussion. Um, uh, so. Right now, I know more about the product than the actual ask, so my sense is that. You would like to move forward, but you would like us to provide some land, I suspect you would like it to be serviced. And then we could start to talk about training, getting the workforce trained in that, that.
That's right, that's exactly.
If I'm understanding.
Yeah.
Okay, so the, the, um, commitment from the town to start is to provide five to ten acres of service land?
That's right, that's exactly.
That's, that's, that's helpful, thank you.
Hey, perfect, well, if there's no other questions, thank you very much, um, for giving us your presentation. Um, what I'll do is I'll call a quick break and then we can talk about kind of what that next step.
Yeah, if you don't mind, just two minutes, Kenny.
You bet.
Could you put on that, the picture of that jade?
Yeah, that's what I'm doing. This is the Peter Laban, who is going to be do the jade also. That's why, like he explaining in the beginning, so this is his, like he wants to do, like whenever we do the factory. So he wants to have some area to do the hit jewelry or something, so another opportunity. So he, if you want to speak, Peter, quick, you can.
Sean Cashner, he is a very good salesman all over the world.
On my side, thank you very much.
We'll do that now, we'll do that after the break.
Sure.
Do it right now.
Do it now, yeah, do it now.
Two minutes, three minutes.
Do it now.
Okay, Sean Cashner, please, Cashner Auctions.
Thank you very much for everybody.
Thank you very much.
We're on. Oh, I don't need any clicker right there, okay, we're gonna do this organically. Counsel, thank you very much for having me over here today, and, uh, Mohammed, excellence be. Um, I also, I, I knew Mohammed from about twelve, twelve years ago. Um, I watched him become what he is here today, and it's remarkable seeing what his accomplishments have amounted to. From becoming a home builder all the way up to be serving, seeing multinational clients right here, so, uh. Not just professionally, but also at a distance, um, I, I. I believe that Mohammed is absolutely fantastic and his innovations have been remarkable for what I've seen following his career over the last twelve years. So just a vote of confidence for you on that. Um, I'm here on behalf of Peter Labant, I'm here to support him. Thank you, Peter.
I'm an old man, eighty years old, and I can still help Drayton Valley lots, thank you.
Thank you very much, Peter.
Now, me, me, myself, uh, what I bring to the table for you all here is I've been a digital marketer over the last twenty years. Um, I've been the CEO of an eight-figure company, um, that, uh, was into ultimately developed into international sales. Um, mainly leveraging it from the auction, but we also started to go and venture into global sales as well. Ultimately, my role here in supporting Peter is that of the international salesperson. So that, uh, we can assess this market here together. Now, the jade market itself is, uh, been, or had the price tag put on of up to thirty billion dollars per year. And it's undercapitalized here in Canada right now, and that's why we believe this is a huge opportunity. Um, ultimately. If everything goes and you make the wise decision of investing into Mohammed's factory, then an other additional source of revenue over here. And most importantly, job creation would also be refining jade here for domestic and also international sales. Uh, we'd start off needing between ten and fifteen people, just as an additional, using the space, which doesn't require anything more. We're just capitalizing. On what Mohammed and his investment firm brings to the table here. So with jade, ultimately, we could, over a period of time, roll this out to, from ten to fifteen jobs, to an additional fifty jobs. Of the, uh, up to thirty billion dollars a year industry that's already happening now. And ultimately, with the accumulation of all of our experience here, um, taking note that. To pave this way here for success, we have substantial experience in the gold industry, also substantial experience in Canadian diamonds. Um, I've helped campaigns sell thousands of carats of Canadian diamonds in my time, ethically sourced, of course, which is very important in this industry in this day and age. And, uh. Under the counsel of Peter, who has over forty years of experience. Mining and also selling and refining these assets, th- there's wisdom, there, there, there's. Practical, applicable commitment and also verifiable experience in this industry. That we can bring a very successful market here in Drayton Valley. And obviously have an exceptional factory over here, but also utilize that space as well. So that we can bring an additional benefit to your community as well with the job creation. And also creating multiple other industries as we refine this. The, uh, the sky's the limits, because once we start bringing in the product, there's so many other offsets to this. There's so many other industries out there in the jade world itself, it's, it's not just jewelry. Um, there are requirements for it, especially over in more of the Asian culture and also other business places. Where they pay a substantial amount of money for tabletops, for other coffers, for other, um, decorative arrangements. There are also functional furnishings, uh, there's also, uh, headstones as well. And we know that the size of these markets, they're, they're not a drop in the pond, they're, they're substantial there. So, uh, it's, uh, definitely something that I really would love to see happen here in Drayton Valley. And I hope that, uh, you guys also see a substantial amount of value to it. Well, with all of our experience, we've also done things such as, um, sell relics from Picasso. So the, the real experience there in bringing a valuable product to market. To supplement this, uh, amazing opportunity that Mohammed has brought to market, or is at market with. I believe that this is also a great add-on, a bonus, we'll call it, to the empire of this factory with a value add of jade. And I hope that you guys see value in all of it right over here. Um, I just know that, uh, watching Mohammed right over here, he's, he's amazing, he wears many hats and he's capable of bringing, uh. A, a well-executed product to market for you all, and if there's, uh, any questions, uh, Peter Labant would be glad to answer a room about jade. Thank you very much for your time, it's appreciated.
Thank you very much for coming today.
Pleasure.
Any further questions? Go ahead, Counselor Sheriff.
Uh, uh, Peter, a little bit more background on your sales, you said you've been selling jade to Asia from St. Paul, you said?
Yes.
Do you have a factory, are you?
No, no.
No?
If I can explain, I used to export jade to China, I exported, uh, uh, the, the biggest jade boulder, forty-three thousand pounds out of Canada. More than any other jade producer in Canada, I did it. Okay, I do know business, my son, Extreme Oilfield, has over three hundred employees today. I started him out in business in the vacuum truck business, we got the biggest vacuum truck business in Alberta, and we're in B.C. in Saskatchewan. We do know business a little bit, we are farmers, we still own fifty quarters of land in St. Paul, paid for. So I want to help out the community, because I do like Daniel Smith, and I did like Nancy Dobbs. So this is why we got to, we, uh, we had the opportunity to have a little conversation. And I, and I did meet Andrew Byachenko, I think, and he wants to, to, to help out also. And he's from your Drayton Valley constituency. So this is me, and, and for me, I don't need anyone in this world, I want to help out people and have a good name, a legacy. That, uh, that, uh, that, that I did something good for the people of Canada and Alberta. So this is me, Peter Labant, an old man, come eighty years old, but I still drive caterpillars, ten hours a day. I built a hundred and sixty miles road in Canada with my equipment, so I do know a little bit about certain things. But thank you very much, Nancy Dobbs and your, and your counsel.
Well, thank you very much, we appreciate everybody coming today, uh, giving your presentation. I think what we'll do is we'll call a break before we jump into our department reports, and then we can just maybe have a quick, uh, chat with you before you part. And then talk about maybe what the next steps, so we'll reconvene our meeting in ten minutes. Hey, perfect, we'll reconvene our meeting at eleven forty, we don't have much left here on the agenda. Um, we'll jump back into our department reports, uh, and we are at ten point three Community and Recreation Services Department Report by Mr. Von Claveren. Welcome back.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and through to the rest of council, so the department report for the, uh, Community and Recreation Services. Uh, ECDC, so our Childcare Development Center. Um, they are still hosting and, and working with the indigenous elders on developing a program. That's going to be basically utilized throughout the whole year for indigenous teachings with the, uh, uh. for Indigenous teachings with the kids and the elders and basically the parents in the homeless, or homeless in the daycare center. Sorry for that. It means that this program could be utilized maybe to other locations as well. But it's funded by Wehrhauer in partnership with the FRIA funding. As you see, we gave some numbers as well for the ECDC. An interesting number, of course, is the 120 children on the waitlist. That's a number that's been there for quite some time. We will do some deeper research in the coming weeks. We have the opening of the daycare, the additional daycare in town on this coming Friday, the 14th. So we will take a deeper look into what this number means, when that consists to stay like that, that number, or what the reason is, of course, for that. And for the Drayton Valley and District FCSS, Canada Day is also mentioned, of course, for our Conference Centre and our Omniplex. Because we had a very successful Canada Day on July 1st. What is really important to mention, of course, we bring this to the community basically with sponsor money. So our fireworks is something that council, of course, approves in our budget. But bringing on this Canada Day events is done by searching and finding sponsors throughout the community that are generous to make sure that we can put all those events on. And we saw, of course, today already a highlight of one of our co-organizers helpers to make this happen. The parade, and both the parade and the fireworks, they dodged the bullets of the weather. And it was great to see the community come out and enjoy that outside, of course. Block parties, we have a couple of them already happening. And we still invite, of course, the people to come out and find some funding that we can support, meeting your neighbors in your own neighborhood, and make sure that you make connections with the people surrounding you. The other items in the Omniplex are ongoing, the building items that we do. So the netting, for instance, that we make sure that we are going to get ready for the next coming winter season. Interesting thing for the activities is that we saw the obstacle race in the parade, and they announced their next event next year already. So they made good commercial of that, and it was fun to see. So June 8th, next year, 2024, put it in your calendar. The Ricochet Oil Corp Aquatic Centre, the grass has gone in. So we had the finalized items outside, so that's clear for everybody to see over there. And even though it's raining, they have to really water it, make sure that it's, let's say, surviving our temperatures in the beginning of, in this warm summer. For the other stats that you see in this report for Community Services, we bring you again the reports from both the Shelter Pods and the Warming Hearts Centre. It's great to see those numbers, of course. And we will report shortly in, after a year, as we bring back to council, of course, the findings of our daycare centre to be open there. And of course, the Shelter Pods as well on a regular basis. So we'll come back to you with more of those findings and the operations on that. The facilities, we do have the upgrades. It's a long project that's been in the works of the audio and visual equipment. So in the MCC, we finalized that basically. And in the CTC, we're still working on the items that are finally coming in from our suppliers and making sure that those are installed, to make sure that we have the right and the correct possibilities for presentations, and basically our equipment works to the standards that we think they should work. Thank you. And if there's any questions, happy to answer.
Thank you very much for that. Any questions for Hans? Wow, quite, quite a bunch. Well, thank you very much for your report and everything that you do. There's been a lot of exciting things happening, so you've been busy, busy, busy. So we certainly appreciate it. We'll move along to Corporate Services and Office of the CAO, Ms. Thompson.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go through this pretty briefly. So for finance, we're just ramping up the tax collection. We're seeing a lot of tax payments being made as we're nearing, or yeah, getting into the last few weeks before the deadline. We're communicating and dealing with residents who had high consumption, water consumption during the evacuation. We're processing insurance claims resulting from the evacuation, including loss of revenue. We're also participating in asset management workshops that are being hosted by AIM. And those, AIM is our consultant that's working at the sort of the next phase of implementing our asset management and our, doing our asset assessments. Our asset assessments are capital plans and our service levels, and how those integrate and help us make decisions. In IT, we have, we're currently finalizing our phone migration deployment. I believe that should be done today. And then also working at migrate, the migration of GIS to the Amazon cloud, and planning deployment to the public, of the public security cameras. So our IT is involved in Tom's project, working with Tom and Cody, rolling out the security cameras project. And in the Office of the CAO, reviewing tree planting grant requirements, working with the county and the provincial government on the disaster recovery program application. We're meeting with and supporting our managers as we start continuing, start or continue working on various capital operating projects. And of course, as always, meeting with various stakeholders. And in more depth, going forward in the next few weeks, reviewing our corporate business plan to ensure we're on track to meet our goals. And in records, we're sorting through records that are no longer needed to be held. And then finding better way of filing records and seeing where legislation change in terms of what is required from us for records and, and finding the, a way of keeping records that make the most sense and make things the easiest to be found later on. So that's everything from me.
Thank you very much for that. Any questions? And keep in mind that lunch is here, Bill. Go ahead, Counselor Ballas.
Tacos, that's okay. Yesterday I was on our site, and I was just looking at our option pay card.
Sure.
And then I just threw out some numbers. And say if somebody wanted to pay their taxes for $2,000, it would cost them $78 to do that.
Correct.
Why?
Because that's their fee.
Correct. That's their fee. That's their fee.
That's their fee.
That's their fee.
Who's fee?
Yep.
So I can't see many people using that.
Nope.
So is there another option for that?
We, it's, there, we don't, really don't encourage property tax payment with credit. However, that's not the reason why this fee exists. It simply exists either we're eating it or the customer's eating it, because the credit card charge is there. So the reason why we don't accept it just at our, well, because we have an agreement with, oh my gosh, I can't remember the company that does our debit. But we just do debit, yeah. And, and then we provide that option for credit card payment to make it easy. And more people use it for like tons of other payments that we do, like pet licensing and all that kind of stuff. But yeah.
Even for a $400 payment, it's 14 bucks.
Yep. It's just supposed to be 3%. I believe it's 3%. But so imagine, imagine what it would cost us if someone was able to pay a $20,000 property tax bill via credit, and we would eat that cost. So we would have to flow that back through in, into our, our revenue to make that work. And that is the reason why that, that exists.
There's other systems, I would think, that's available, whether through our banking institute.
For no charge? I haven't found one that does it for no charge. But certainly, we're always looking, because, you know, we, every year, we, we relook at our agreements for debit and credit. And certainly, we're always looking. We just haven't found one, a credit card that offers credit cards with much, I don't, I don't know that I've found one for much lower than 2.5 or 3%. So it's, it's certainly something we look at, but just we haven't found one yet.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It seems very expensive, and I don't think it would encourage many people to use it.
No.
Sorry, just a follow-up. How about debit though? Debit should be way cheaper than that, right?
Right. Debit, debit charges are, are cheaper, yeah. Yeah, they're, they're much cheaper, and we, we pay for the cost. Because we pay like a set fee for, for the month, and it kind of varies by collection. But it's not like MasterCard or credit card. Credit card fees are entirely dependent on the, either the number of uses or the dollar value. And so that's, yeah, almost always by the, the amount. Yeah.
I just wanted to bring that.
Yeah, absolutely. Certainly, we, we're always looking to make things more convenient and, and cost-effective. But seeing that we collect 50, between 11 and 12 million dollars in taxes, that'd be, certainly not everyone would use it, but that, that's just the consideration there. Yeah.
The second thing is, when you call the switchboard here, and if you can't get a person or if somebody's not answering, why can't we have it set up so that if you want Public Works, dial 1? If you want this certain person, dial 2, 3, 4, whatever. I mean, you know, other companies have that technology. And at least they can get that person and leave the message with that particular person.
I believe we would have to have it set up, can Nathan correct me if I'm wrong, where that would eliminate the front desk answering altogether? So I, I don't know that for sure, but I will let Nathan speak to that. If you could come up here? Could you come up here, Nathan?
Come on down, Nathan.
Good morning.
Morning.
Madam Mayor, Counsel. We did briefly implement an automated system back in, I believe, late 2019, 2020. It was rejected very quickly by council and administration because it was too impersonal.
Yes, I recall.
So it was not very popular with the public or with council members. So we could try it again if you'd like.
Well, I guess I'd sooner get to the person than if there's no answer, then leave a message with, I don't know who. You know, if you're phoning any company now, basically, it doesn't matter what, there's options. And I think our people deserve some options. I know there's,
Yes.
In my opinion. I, I don't know. I'm just.
Yeah, everyone on our old system and the new system does have individual voice panel as well. So, so those messages, if you get to their mailbox, a message can be delivered to that person. Or they can leave a message with the front desk at the civic centre.
The problem is you can't get to that person's mailbox because you have no option of getting there.
You mean getting directly to it?
Correct.
Without going through the front desk?
Yes.
If they, if they have a DID, if they have a direct outside number, you can do that. You can call them directly.
Yeah, if the general public has that number, but most don't, they call the main number.
Yeah, I think those numbers are posted on our website.
Yeah, the, the staff who do have.
They'll vote to the website. They call the office.
Yeah, certainly, you know, we can, we can talk about this again, see what it costs, see what it would take. But like ideally, it would be nice is if the first option is somebody answer the phone. And if it's busy, like if the front desk is busy, then the other option would be going to that, you know, press this button. I just don't know if that's possible. I think it's either, either or. It's like if you call, for example, like IGA or Independent, right away, you don't get a person until you've went through and selected your option, and then you get to a person. And so that, I think, was where, during that time where it was unpopular because it felt less personal, so.
What, what, your number one option could be the front desk, though?
Yep, for sure.
And I, and I will certainly say with the new system that we're rolling out literally this week, finally, there is or will be that option available. So we could add on an extra layer of automation to, you know, dial a single digit for a particular department, say Public Works or the Swimming Pool or something like that. That isn't implemented currently, but we can certainly have Telus implement that for us.
Yeah, we can, we can look into that and possibly bring it back to council. You know, it's not necessarily something council has to decide on, but I know it impacts customer service. It impacts the public, and so it then becomes something that council's interested in. So we can look at it internally and talk about it some more and bring it back.
I just know that I've been getting some complaints, but people trying to get the front desk and no answer, and then seems to be no follow-up, or I don't know what's happening, or they just hang up, whatever.
Yeah, that's probably what's happening. Because we, if Sue's, like, let's say our front desk is on the phone at that time, like she can't answer a second call at the same time, right? But yeah.
I think we live in an over-automated world, and it would be just nice for someone to pick up the phone and say, hello, are you there?
Yeah.
That's what I would like, just somebody to be there on the line.
And, and I will say right now, coming forward in the next budget season, you know, the team, the finance team will be putting a business case forward for an additional team member. Just because it's, you know, with adding various services over time, you know, landfill, now we're operating landfill, affordable housing, things like that. It's slowly starting to put a bit more strain on the team. And so having a second person, a floater that could help answer phones when the first phone is busy, that would certainly help. So it's not, you know, we know that there's things to be done to make customer service better, and that's, that's definitely one of them. But we'll consider the options and see how we can deliver the best service for our customers.
Perfect. Thank you. Counselor McGee?
It's a quick question. Communicating with residents that had high water consumption during evacuation. I, I did get a call, just a call, that said I shouldn't have to pay for the sewer charges because we didn't use the sewer, but I'll pay for the water. So you're communicating with them, but you're in.
Right, yeah.
Most, you're not really, you're just saying, we're just communicating, we're not giving.
No, not at this time. And I certainly, I wanted to discuss it and close a bit further to see if we could get, you know, just to give council a bit more information. But right now, they're being directed to their insurance companies. Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Thank you, Nathan. Okay, well, thank you very much for your report. We'll move on to Communications Department, 10.5, Ms. Stone.
Good morning, Counsel.
Good morning.
All right, so again, it's been busy the last little while. It's a week ago now, we had the, some representatives from the Government of Alberta here for the disaster recovery announcement. So I was helping to make those arrangements ahead of time and get some speaking notes together. Our FireSmart content is continuing to run on social media. Again, that's ongoing throughout the summer months. And I am really starting to work on the Citizen Budget Tool that we're going to be rolling out probably September sometime. So I'm getting the content together for all that. Alberta is going to have to get the numbers together. So that will be taking up a considerable amount of time in the next couple of weeks. And of course, as Hans was mentioning about Canada Day, we had a lot of information going out. And of course, as the, the weather was changing throughout the day, there was a lot of chatter on social media. Is the parade happening? When are the fireworks happening? Things like that. So everything seemed to have gone off, so that was, that was good. Our Rural Renewal Stream website continues to be quite popular. We're providing ongoing support with the website, posting jobs, and making sure that the team has what they need to make sure that they're successful. Business visitations, just preparing content for our new businesses that are opening up and accompanying the team to those where possible. And as Hans was talking about earlier, with some like the line painting and the roadwork that's going to start getting underway, that is being posted on social media and has been for the last couple of days. Just noting, of course, that it's weather-dependent and just making sure that the public is aware of those activities. And working with Shelley on a larger public engagement piece about the landfill waste footprint expansion that's going to be taking place. So that does require a large public engagement. And so I'm building that strategy and working with her and the larger team to make sure that that is successful. If there's any questions?
Thank you very much for that. Any questions for Ms. Stone? Well, thank you very much for your report. We'll move on to Counselor Reports, and we have Counselor Revins. You were up first. It seemed like you were up first last time. Or I guess it was Colin, but Colin's not here.
Yes, you caught me off guard last time.
And I caught you off guard.
I'm a little, little bit prepared. Let me see, on June 29th, attended the Appreciation Breakfast for Staff, which was, which was good to chat with a few folks and gather a few dishes. And then after, later in the day, the Immigration Symposium, which, yeah, I found interesting. Hopefully, there was quite a few folks there that wanted some personal sort of information. And hopefully, they, they found some of that information. July 4th, the Disaster Recovery Funding Announcement, I attended. July 5th, Economic Development Meeting, and then. July 5th, Economic Development Meeting, and then later on in the evening, we had the Fire Department Supper, which was, which was nice. Nice to do something special for those folks who worked so hard during the, during the fire. On the 11th, I attended the tour of the RCMP detachment with most of council and yeah, that was somewhat illuminating, although we kind of knew there was issues there. Yeah, another interesting issue we need to find a solution for. So hopefully, we can get some cooperation from our neighbours and come up with something that works for them. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. Counselor McGee?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, the list is the same. The one thing that stood out for me was the, my ability to keep up with the float on Canada Day is failing miserably. And I, I did mention to Colin that I was so happy that his kids were bringing me buckets of candy. So that was, for me, was the bit of the highlight, recognizing my conditions. The other thing that I would say, we had an opportunity, Madam Mayor, to meet with Eminem Pipeline. And we'll talk more about that over time, but it was, it had to do with sensitivity and I think we are an inclusive and sensitive community. I applaud them for, for raising it and we'll, we, you'll hear more about that as we go along. That's it for me. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Counselor Ballas?
Oh, I skipped right over Counselor Sherris. I'm sorry. I can pretty much echo the wild, the Staff Appreciation Breakfast Immigration Symposium. What stood out for me is Counselor McGee and myself, we took some sandwiches to the ECDC and we had a brief conversation with Bernice, Bernice, I always mess up her name, sorry. So what came up was in case of evacuation, if it were to ever happen again, this time we were lucky enough, I guess, in the sense that it was at nighttime, but what were to happen if it was during school hours? And we actually kind of touched on that subject at the Health Community Coalition Committee. And we were talking about maybe bringing in kind of like a fire drill, educational practice, something to, to plan ahead if something like this, another disaster were to happen during school hours where we don't have school buses, the kids are at school, parents may or may not be able to get the kids from school or daycare to, it could be a mess. So that was very interesting and I think we should really look a little bit deeper into doing some kind of education on what if that were to happen. That's it.
Perfect. Thank you very much for that. Counselor Ballas?
Well, thank you. Basically, I echo everybody else. On the 4th, Disaster Recovery Program Announcement, on the 5th, the Economic Development Meeting, and then the Fire Department Food Delivery and Meat. 11th, the RCMP Detachment Tour, and brings us today to the regular meeting. And then for those that are interested on Thursday and Friday, I'm having a grat cell.
Oh. Thank you for that, Bill. Deputy Mayor Gomana.
Thank you. Yeah, you know, it's the same list, but I'll go through the list anyways. 20 night wildfire stop, appreciation breakfast, Immigration Symposium. It was nice to see immigration consultants and businesses in town connecting together to figure out and solve some of the immigration issues, like Counselor Evans mentioned. I think they had a chance at the breakout sessions to get together and ask those personal questions and they have their connections as well to connect with them later. On the 1st of July, again, the highlight. It's great to see how much attendance for the parade and how much of candy that we gave away. I think I'm very happy that we didn't run out of candy this year, so as kudos to the administration to find the right number of candies.
For hiding enough candy.
Exactly. On the 4th, Disaster Recovery Announcement and at the Youth Advisory Committee in the evening, again, very worthwhile conversations with the youth and trying to figure out their mandate and their vision and what need to be brought to the council and I think they are going to come and present to the council at some point here pretty soon. On the 5th, Economic Development and Ad hoc Committee Meeting and Fire Department Supper, as mentioned. On the 11th, RCMP Detachment Tour, got to know, you know, what's working for them and what's not, and you don't need to continue that discussion. And importantly, I'm just, I guess, continuing the tradition of our previous mayor, I had a haircut yesterday.
Thank you very much for that. Yeah, so everybody talked about the Disaster Recovery Announcement that we had. We had Deputy Premier Mike Ellis here, Minister MacGyver and MLA Andrew Pachinko join us for that. Then, of course, we had all the news outlets that were here to make that announcement. I believe it was for $175 million that, for Alberta Recovery, for the wildfires. For us, these funds will help to recover some of the costs that are incurred, that were incurred during the Buck Creek wildfire, including wages for those that were helping on the front lines. As well as, where else am I here? As well as damage during the wildfire and the firefighting effort, the infrastructure damage during the wildfire and firefighting efforts. And the reception centre costs for displaced evacuees as well. So thank you to our administration and emergency team in preparing those documents and working together with the provincial government to get, to get that out and it definitely helps us. I also had the privilege of attending the wildfire breakfast and dinner appreciation, just to say thank you to everybody that fought hard for our community out and about in the community, celebrating the new businesses that have been opening. And of course, the Canada Day celebration, we had the RCMP tour. Elvira and myself have been discussing what that five-year multi-financial plan looks like with Staff Sergeant Troy as well as Sergeant Ryan Hoopner. So we'll continue those discussions this week and we'll also have to, council will have to have a further discussion on what the facility looks like as well as with our partners. That is it for me for my report. I want to give a shout out to my birthday, or to my daughter, Madden. It is her birthday today. So she is celebrating, so happy birthday to her. And that is it for my report as well. Is there a member of council that would like to accept the reports, all the reports, both department and council as information? Councillor Evans, thank you very much for that. All in favour? That is carried and we will move, or we'll break for lunch hour right now. And that is it for everything on our agenda. When we come back, we'll go into our closed session and that will be the end of our agenda.